And we will resume with a pledge of allegiance.
Where did you do?
This is another meeting.
No, sir.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right now. Okay. All righty. We have presentations. Presentation of a joint resolution, Alzheimer's Awareness Day.
I'd like to call up Suzanne Miller Allen, Kristin Rossi, and Amy Frenzel from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and also Kristin rather, is from the Alzheimer's Association. And I'd like to ask, this presentation is a joint resolution between the council and the mayor, and I'd like to ask Councilman Monalbom, who initiated this, if he would want to come forward and help present.
This is a joint resolution in recognition of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan and Blue Care Network 2018 Alzheimer's Campaign. Whereas, every 66 seconds, someone in the United States is diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. It's the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and kills more people than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. And whereas, in 2018, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan and Blue Care Network will shine a spotlight on the disease through partnerships with the two leading Alzheimer's Association chapters covering Michigan, the Greater Michigan Chapter and the Great Lakes Chapter. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is a degenerative brain disease and is the most common cause of dementia. Alzheimer's progresses differently for every individual, but symptoms tend to develop slowly and worsen until they affect a person's everyday activity. Common symptoms include difficulties with memory, language, problem solving, and other cognitive skills that cause confusion with familiar knowledge. These common symptoms of dementia account for an estimated 60 to 80 percent of all Alzheimer's cases. And whereas, the corporate campaign will be led by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan and Blue Care Network President and CEO Daniel J. Lepp, who is also honorary Chair of the Alzheimer's Association Chocolate Jubilee Fundraiser. Also supporting the campaign this year is Amy Frenzel, Vice President, Service Operations, and Board Member of the Greater Michigan Chapter. And whereas, on June 21st, 2018, the longest day of the year and summer solstice, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan and Blue Care Network will join this global movement to raise awareness and support for those affected by Alzheimer's disease. And whereas, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan and Blue Care Network, along with several other organizations across the state, including the city of Southfield, will light up their buildings in purple to show support for those affected by this disease. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and city council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize and commend Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan and Blue Care Network for taking the lead in raising awareness about Alzheimer's disease and supporting patients and their families who are affected by it. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and city council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 21st, 2018 as Alzheimer's Awareness Day in the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you. I'm Suzanne Miller Allen, on behalf of Blue Cross. My colleagues, Kristin Rossi from the Alzheimer's Association and Amy Frenzel, board member, Kristi Lasseter from our team. We want to thank you in joining over 40 landmarks across Michigan in turning purple this week in awareness of this terrible disease. We are honored to be a proud corporate citizen in Southfield, as well as the Alzheimer's Association just across the street, and thank you for helping us shed light on this disease. I'll let Kristin say a couple things about it, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of the 180,000 people in Michigan living with Alzheimer's or another form of dementia, and the over 500,000 caregivers caring for them, June is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, so it's really when we want to focus on them, and the longest day is when we commemorate their struggle. But we really do this in a way that gives it a little bit of levity by painting the town purple, so we appreciate Blue Cross Blue Shield's efforts in extending their powerful brand and positive reputation to create a halo effect around us and thereby bringing the city of Southfield in to also create that same halo effect. So, thank you. This means a lot for those struggling with the disease.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, do they want to come up and shake council people's hand?
Thank you.
Thanks for the good work.
Okay. 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 Photo time? Okay. But before we do that, I want to just mention that part of our goals and objectives that we established in December for this coming year, that we would be asking all our boards and commissions to come in and make a presentation to council, and also to make sure that council and the boards and commission, we're on the same page with respect to objectives and missions. Mr. Cruz, I gave him that assignment, to reach out to our boards and commissions. I think tonight is the first presentation, so Mr. Cruz, you'd like to give a few comments on your project.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Basically kind of led into what I was thinking as well. Again, the council, in an effort to be in communication, better communication with our boards and committees, wanted to do a reach out here this year, and so this is just the first of many that you'll see on council evenings, presentations that'll give both us, as well as those watching and those here that are present at these meetings, an update on what the boards and commissions are doing. I think it's a very wonderful thing, and it speaks a lot about our city, that we have so many people that volunteer their time to serve on these boards and commissions, and are doing very good work, that I don't think is highlighted enough, and so this is an opportunity for everyone to hear about, see about what they're doing, and hopefully may be encouraged or inclined to possibly apply and join some to help out the efforts to keep our community strong and vibrant moving forward. So, with that said, like I said, Mr. Mannion, are you going to start off for us today? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. For the audience, my name is Michael Mannion, Community Relations Director for the city. It is our honor tonight, on behalf of Total Living Commission, to be the first commission to give a report of our recent activities. It has been a busy past couple of years, and we have with us tonight our Total Living Commission Chair, Veronica Leonard, who is a longtime resident and a local attorney, has her own practice. She's been the chair for the past several years. With that, I will turn it over to Chairperson Leonard, who will give you an overview of recent TLC activities.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
While I'm here today, and I'm pleased to stand before you on behalf of the Total Living Commission, and we want to give you a brief update of our activities and progress in meeting the goals and objective that you have assigned to us. We were formed in 1977 by the city council as an official advisory commission. Our purpose is to review, evaluate, and advise council on methods to improve the city. I would submit that we've met that goal for 2017, and I would say we've even exceeded that goal, which I'll outline further in our report. We've been able to actually not just advise the council, we've been able to develop and execute on programming that we believe has been beneficial to city residents. Our commission is comprised of a diverse group of talented residents from various ages and racial and religious backgrounds. We do have a group of commissioners who come from different areas of the city, and they provide us a, their combined knowledge gives us a total breadth of what's going on in the city and keeping, hopefully, council advised of pressing issues. Our current commissioners are listed on our next slide, myself as chair, Deborah Walton Medley, Kyra Harris, our second vice chair, Lauren Beeler, Sheila Gaddy, Herman Gunther, who is present this evening, wave your hand, Shania Jarrett, Sabina Heller, Louis Williams, who's also present this evening, Patricia McMillan. We have a new member, Deborah Smith, who is being appointed this evening, and we also have Chance Stevenson, our student representative. I would submit to the council that we have a good representation of all ages, seniors, midlife professional, millennials, and students. And as a note, we've actually in our membership, we now have, I call them, second generation. We have individuals who were born and raised in the city, who after college, professional school, have decided to return to live in the city, and their input has been invaluable. And 2017 year in review, first is the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award. We reintroduced this community service award to honor members of the community who exemplify the characteristics of the late Greg Kennedy. We did a application, which was circulated throughout the city. I think we reestablished this program maybe two years ago, and we have listed our past autories, John Adams in 2016 and Roger Goolsbee in 2017. I believe the application is still available, so if there are individuals that you would like to submit for nomination, or any of the members of the audience would like to submit a nomination for, you can see me after my presentation. Next, we have our Southfield Ambassadors, which was an exciting program where we had over 15 residents who were interested in serving their city. Our residents want to serve, they want to give back, and the ambassadors program gave our citizens an opportunity to come together to promote Southfield and awareness of the many events. Many of our ambassadors served as volunteers for the various events that go forward in the city, and it was a two-year development program where we introduced them to city services and city offices, and they gave back in terms of their service and ideas. And that program was effective June 1st, 2016 to, June 1st, 2018, so that just ended. That group was also comprised of business owners, seniors, our LTU Lawrence Tech community, so we did get a good turnout from there. One of the highlights of 2017 was the Southfield Spirit Fest. I believe many of you participated in the Southfield Spirit Fest, which kicked off a parade from the LTU down Civic Center to the municipal campus. I think we had representation from most, if not all, of the community, our police force, our schools, our local sports teams, all came out in support of our city and promoting it. It was also tied in with the summer solstice run event, which our members also served as volunteers. 2017, we have meetings every six weeks. I'm sorry, I'm ahead on the high. Our other event for 2017 was our photo prize, which was the first year event, and it was the brainchild of one of our commissioners. We received over 100 entries, high-quality entries. One of the things I think most of us commented was that, none of the entries were from iPhones, from camera phones. They were all from actual cameras, and we had a high quality of work. We displayed the, I guess, the finalists throughout the Civic Center, which you were probably able to see last year, and we received 3,500 total votes, and our winner, we have a picture of, was from a student at LTU, Joe Caputo. And one of the good things about that program is that all of our finalists were able to receive a large-size replica of their photo, which was a nice gift for them. Next, we have, we meet six times, we meet every six weeks, and this is just an overview of the different representatives from the city and the community who have come out to speak at our various meetings over the past year. As you see, we have a good representation of city services, as well as our interim superintendent also came to our last meeting. 2018, what we have done already is participated with the 60th anniversary community celebration. We've started our 2018 Southfield Photo Prize. We received twice as many entries as we had the prior year. We have narrowed it down to 25 finalists, and voting has opened as of June 13th, and the award ceremony will be October 10th. So please keep an eye out for the photos, which should be around the Civic Center Plaza. Upcoming initiatives? One of the issues that are raised by our commissioners is the issues that we've had with delivery of mail with the U.S. Postal Service. So as a commission, we have invited the postmaster to meet with us in one of our upcoming meetings to discuss delivery issues. We've partnered with the Southfield Community Coalition in the past, and we plan to, again, to help plan and present the citywide neighborhood and condo association with a date to be determined. We also assisted the coalition with the community yard sale, which is upcoming June 14th from '92. We're brainstorming, revamping the Southfield Living publication. We continue our discussion about a time bank, as well as a chore, helping assisting with the chore program, and that continues with this development. We also are in development of a Southfield Public Schools mentoring partnership, along with the school's Southfield Compact. We assisted COSA with its ARP age-friendly community designation, and we have a Providence Hospital representative scheduled for our next meeting to just giving us an update as to issues pertaining to their residency in our community. And the boards and commissions and condo, we're planning to participate in the Boards and Commission and Condo Association Recognition Dinner, September 26th. And with that, I'll take any questions from any council members.
Council, you guys are definitely working. You have a full load there. My question, I know you indicated the photos are around the campus, how do we vote on it again?
I believe it's available online, and Michael can...
Yes, absolutely. As Veronica mentioned, the program is live now. It's running from June 13th through August 31st, and as many of you see, there's photos throughout the municipal complex, the Parks and Rec Building, City Hall. We did expand the program from 20 finalists last year to 25 this year. We wanted to continue to grow it. We actually ran out of room, we have so many windows around the front, so if we continue to expand it next year, I think we'll have to wrap around to the Public Services Building, which is something we'd really like to do. As again, as Veronica mentioned, we had double the entries this year, so I think the commission had a very difficult time in narrowing it down to the 25 finalists. Frankly, almost all of them were worthy. We could have seen far more. So, we really would like to continue to grow and expand that program. As I said, it is live now. The public exhibition portion of the enlarged photos is throughout the municipal complex, and then you can vote online at cityofsouthfield.com. Voting is open again through the program duration on August 31st, and you simply go to cityofsouthfield.com. On the homepage, under Highlights, you'll see Photo Prize 2018. From there, you'll see everything's assigned a letter value, and that's you vote for your favorite entry. And as I said, we'll have an award ceremony in October, October 10th, I believe is the date we've settled on, and we just hope to have it be more successful than last year. Last year, we had over 3,500 votes, which is a significant amount, being the first program of its kind, the launching of it. We didn't know if we'd get 35 or 350, to get 3,500 really surpassed our expectations. So this year, we're hoping to get even more participation and involvement. It's really just a great way to showcase the beauty of the city, architectural, natural beauty of the city. There's so many great spots to take photos, and as Veronica said, with the advent of phones on everyone's smartphone, but surprisingly, we didn't see a lot of those from the entries, but those are certainly welcome as well. So it's really a great program, and we hope to continue to grow that.
I was at your award program last year, and I was just taken away by all the professional photography, and there were some excellent shots there. It looked like something I was seeing in National Geographic or something, you know.
And I recall Council President Wrightwell at the word ceremony last year asked how many took these on their phone, and I don't think any hands went up. So again, that's where we know that the majority of those were actually from cameras. But this year, I do think we got a few from phones, from what I received, you know, in the submissions, so.
Okay.
But as I said, we got almost 200 total entries this year, so very successful.
Great, great. Anybody else? Well, I think you, this is a very successful presentation. I think you covered your mission, and I could see where you are tied in with the mission of the city of Southfield, and you guys are doing a wonderful job, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. And I would just like to thank all of our Total Living Commission members. In addition to Chairperson Leonard, we've got some other great membership, and we really appreciate all of their time, effort, and energy that they put forth to that, so. Thank you, Council.
Oh, one second.
Yeah, I do have, is that report that you gave possible for each one of the council people to have?
Certainly. I will email that to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be appointments, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, you have quite a few there?
I have some, and the rest are from the Boards and Commission Chair, Mr. Monalbom.
Okay.
So, Council this evening, I have four appointments, I'd like to call them up. Reappointment to the Historic District Commission is Barbara Macbeth. She cannot be here with us this evening, but would like to continue to serve. And then I have the appointment to the Historic District Commission of Corey Moffett. Mr. Moffett's here. And I also have the appointment to the Historic District Commission of Dale Guyer, Professor Guyer from Lawrence Tech. Thank you. And then finally, to the Downtown Development Authority, we have a vacancy, and the appointment of Thomas Earhart. Mr. Earhart is the Chief Officer for Guardian Alarm in Southfield. His business is in the Downtown Development District.
Along with the mayoral appointments, we have a couple council appointments, and those would be, for the Board of Review, we have the appointment of Larry Snyder. We have the Public Arts Commission, Janine Pixley. The Total Living Commission, that just gave a wonderful presentation. We have an appointment of Deborah Smith. And then with the Historic Designation Advisory Board, we have a reappointment of Darla Van Hoy, the appointment of Corey Moffett, and the appointment of Dr. Dale Guyer. We also have, that's not listed, but it's through ordinance, we have ex-officios that are appointed through the ordinance for the Historic Designation Advisory Board, and those are the Planning Director, the Building Director, and the Parks and Rec Chairperson, who is Rosemary Allen. She's here. Perfect. And we also have the Planning Commission Chairperson, Donald Culpepper.
Okay.
Who's not here, but he's appointed through as an ex-officio.
Okay, Council, you've heard the recommendations for appointment and reappointment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve the appointments and reappointments to the various boards and commissions as presented this evening.
A move by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the appointments and reappointments presented this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. You will now be sworn in and have to sign the book with the city clerk.
Yeah, we're all here. We've got like a choir tonight. So, we're going to do everyone together, but everyone knows the board that they're on, so when I, this is going to be a little gap in the space, you just say the board that you're on. So if you guys can kind of do a half circle, so everybody can see you. And just raise your right hand for me, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the city charter, and I will faithfully reform the duties of the office of... Your... To the best of my ability. And you say, "I do." I just need you guys to, you got to sign.
Okay, Madam Clerk, once they sign, can you direct them to come this way?
Yes, sir. So I need you to sign right here, and put right here for me.
Sign here?
Yeah?
Okay.
That's it?
That's it?
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
You're right here for me. I like that. Congratulations. You're here for me, right there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are right here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to put them all in later.
So where do I sign?
You're right here. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
You are going to be right there.
Right here?
Yes.
Congratulations again. We need your help.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
How you doing?
Good.
You're right there. Yeah? Yep. Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are right here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to put them all in later.
So where do I sign?
You're right here. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
You are going to be right there.
Right here?
Yes.
Congratulations again. We need your help.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
How you doing?
Good.
You're right there. Yep.
I'm in two positions, so do I need to do two?
You're on the...
I'm on the Historic District Commission and the Historic District Advisory Board.
Just one, you're good, yep. Congratulations, thank you. So they said, "Go slow."
I'm a lefty.
That's better, see?
I have to tilt the paper. Where, right here?
Right here on this line for me, sir.
Right here.
Oh, I'll get out. Oh, you want to get that out?
Thank you.
Congratulations. She missed it, we got to do it again.
Oh, you got to do it again? She's such a mess. Thank you so much.
Who is Dave, if you're coming? Who's David? Do you have a David? Yeah. You got a name?
I'm busy. Good to see you.
Yeah. Okay, we resume the meeting.
We do have minutes. Ms. Morris.
Mr. President, just right before that, for our committee of the whole minutes of June 8th, we're going to add the fact that the... How you doing?
Good.
You're right there. Yeah.
I'm in two positions, so do I need to do two?
You're on the...
I'm on the Historic District Commission and the Historic District Advisory Board.
Just one. You're good. Yep. Congratulations. Thank you. So, they said, "Go slow."
I'm a lefty.
That's better. See, you want it...
Well, I have to tilt the paper. Where, right here?
Right here on this line for me, sir.
Right here. Thank you.
Congratulations. She missed it. We gotta do it again.
Oh, you gotta do it again? She's such a mess. Thank you so much.
Who is Dave, if you're coming?
I'm sorry?
Who's David, if you're coming? Do you have a David?
Yeah.
You got a name?
Yeah.
I didn't see you raise your hand.
What was his name?
I was swearing already.
Yeah.
Okay, we resume the meeting. We do have minutes. Ms. Mars?
Mr. President, just right before that, for our Committee of the Whole Minutes of June 8th, we're gonna add the fact that those minutes need to reflect the discussion to move the Parks and Rec Recreation Operations Manager to the Management Group. That was something that was discussed, that was omitted from the minutes in our study session that we had on Friday. So, we let the minutes, corrected minutes reflect that.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 29th, 2018, the Committee of the Whole Meeting on June 4th, 2018, and the Committee of the Whole Meeting of June 8th, 2018, with the narrative of the Parks and Recs conversation being duly noted.
Support. Move by Ms. Mars and supported by Mr. Cruz that we approve the minutes of May 29, June 4, and June 8. The June 8 minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved as amended and presented. We will now move into the Consent Agenda. We have Consent Agenda. Let me just say, I do encourage all the residents who are viewing to go to the city clerk's site and look up the agenda for the council. Because when I give the Consent Agenda, I would only give highlights and some fiscal impact. But the more detail is on the website under the council agenda. We have items A through H. If there, if nothing is to be pulled or set aside for further discussion, I will actually get into the content of the Consent Agenda. The first item is a receipt of bid for Section 12 Concrete Road Repair. Five acceptable bids were received from contractors pre-qualified through the city request for contract qualifications RFQ process. The proposed project will rehabilitate the concrete roads with spot repairs and some long segments of reconstruction in the Pine Wood Manor and Bestwood Wood Subdivision in Section 12. ADA ramp improvements would be limited to areas impacted by adjacent road repairs. When completed, this project will improve 3.7 miles of local road construction. It's scheduled to begin, the road construction is scheduled to begin in mid-July and completed by November. The fiscal impact of this particular project, the acceptable low bid of $1,241,936.50 was submitted by Cipron Contracting of Southfield, Michigan. The total cost of the project, including a 25% engineer inspection, testing, and contingencies, is $1,552,420. Funds for this particular project are provided by the Road Bond Construction Fund. Consent Agenda Item B, receipt of bid for Lockdale Street and Cass Avenue Road Avenue Improvement. Seven acceptable bids were received from contractors pre-qualified through the city request for contract qualifications as RFQ process. The proposed project will reconstruct both roads in asphalt with new concrete curb and gutter. The road geometrics for Lockdale Street and Cass Avenue are changing from four lanes to three lanes. ADA improvements will be made at the 12-mile road intersection, which will provide for safe pedestrian crossing of 12 mile for the first time at these intersections. This is a two-year contract with Lockdale Street to be built in 2018, and Cass Avenue to be built in 2019. The fiscal impact for this project is as follows. The acceptable bid, the acceptable low bid of $2,591,051.43 was submitted by Paymar Enterprises of New Haven, Michigan. The total cost of the project, including a 25% engineer inspection, testing, and contingencies, is $3,238,815. Funds are provided by the Road Bond Construction Fund, and the anticipated reimbursement of 2018 and 2019 from Oakland County in funds in the amount of $345,176. Let me just read that again, because it confused me. Funds are provided by the Road Bond Construction Fund, and the anticipated reimbursement of 2018 and 2019 by Oakland County LRIP funds in the amount of $345,176. Consent Agenda Item C, authorized agreement by MDOT for Safe Routes to School Program, Southfield Village Estates Sidewalk Improvement. The Michigan Department of Transportation has presented contract documents for Safe Routes to School Program, serving the students of Thompson International Academy, Yeshita Beth Yahuda, and Beth Jacob. Schools with the complete sidewalk network in Southfield Village Estates Subdivisions, as well as pedestrian crossing each at 10 mile and 11 mile. These federal funds are provided under Transportation Alternative Program administered by MDOT. The project which will enable, which would enable and encourage children to safely walk and back to school includes sidewalk constructions, sidewalk infill, crosswalk installation, and ADA ramp work. The fiscal impact of this particular project, the estimated federal cost is $599,589.20. The City of Southfield estimated cost share is $323,661, including a 25% contingency and construction engineering, for a total estimated cost of $923,250. The City of Southfield was notified of the successful Safe Routes to School grant in May of '16. Funding for the city's share shall be provided from the local street budget and the major street budget. Consent Agenda Item D, interlocal agreement with Beverly Hills for the distribution of water. The property at 16055 West 13 Mile is situated within the boundaries of the City of Southfield. However, it is not serviced by the water from the City of Southfield. Instead, water is distributed to the property by the Village of Beverly Hills. Condition upon the agreement by Southfield that in event the property only fails to pay for the water provided by Beverly Hills, upon notification to the City of Southfield, Southfield will place the delinquent water charges on the City of Southfield property tax roll in accordance with applicable provisions of state law. Beverly Hills is now seeking to have an interlocal agreement executed by and on behalf of the City of Southfield to admit that if property at 16055 West 13 Mile failed to pay all charges of water provided by Beverly Hills, the City of Southfield will add such delinquent amounts to Southfield City taxes and collect same on behalf of Beverly Hills. Consent Agenda Item E, authorization to replace construction trailer for the Streets and Highway Department. The city administrator is asking for city, for council approval to purchase a replacement construction trailer for the Streets and Highway Department through the mid-deal purchase contract. That's M-I-D-E-A-L purchase contract. The new construction trailer will replace a 1989 Econoline 12-ton construction trailer with a damaged and cracked frame structure that is no longer safe to operate. The replacement is a 2018 Felling 15-ton construction trailer. The fiscal impact of this is the cost of the 2018 Felling 15-ton construction trailer is $17,966. Funding for this particular project is provided in the 2017-18 Motor Pool Budget. Consent Agenda Item F, authorization to purchase replacement moors for Streets and Highway Department. The city administrator is asking council for approval to purchase three moors for the Streets and Highway Departments through the city bid processing program, which allows municipalities to buy goods and services at the most advantageous pricing. The department currently utilize a 2006 Toro 58D mower and a 2006 Toro 4000D mower, which have logged 21, 2,155, and 3,110 operating hours respectively. Both machines also have mechanical and dependability issues. It was determined that it is most practical to replace these, the aforementioned item, with three X-Mark label S-series moors for $31,999. The purchase option will save the city approximately $50,000. The fiscal impact, the cost of for each X-Mark Laser X-series moors is $31,999 for a total cost of $95,997. Funding is provided in the 2017-18 Motor Pool Budget. Consent Agenda Item G. Mr. Focassi.
When you get through, I'd like to have a roll call on G.
Okay. So, noted, roll call, I mean, item number G, continuation of marketing contract for Smart Zone. On June 15, 2015, Southfield City Council approved a contract with Moncur Associates of Southfield, Michigan, for the branding and digital marketing of the Southfield Smart Zone. Over the past three years, Moncur understood that Southfield wants to send, want to be seen as the center of it all and a technology and innovative destination. Currently, Moncur maintains, Moncur is maintaining and hosting the Southfield Centropolis website and maintaining community management through blogs and social media publishing. At this time, staffers requested a six-month contract to allow Moncur to continue marketing efforts for the Smart Zone, while the purchasing department seeks proposal for a new contractual term. The fiscal impact of this project would be expenditures are expected to be $30,000 to retain the marketing agency for a six-month period. The fees are flat to the previously awarded contract at $5,000 per month. Funds are provided for this service in the 2018-2019 Smart Zone Budget. Consent Agenda Item H, healthcare and benefit consultant and broker of record. On March 7, 2018, staff received eight qualifications packets for a healthcare and benefit consultant and broker of records. The selected firm will assist the Human Resources Department with strategic planning, plan management, vendor renewal, contracts, and compliance of the City Health and Wellness Benefit Program, provided to active and retired employees and their dependents. The evaluation method used to select most qualified firm, the most qualified firm was the qualification-based selection, QBS, process. A five-person evaluation committee, consisting of staff from purchasing, human resources, and one guest, human resource director, conducted a comprehensive evaluation of eight consulting firms. Cornerstone Municipal Advisory Group of Troy was the highest-scoring firm. The contract terms of this contract will be a three-year term, commenced in June 19, 2018, through June 18, 2021, with an option to extend the contract for one additional three-year term, and a fee scheduled as follows. The Cornerstone Municipal Group fee proposed of $80,000 for 2018-2019 will be provided for in the 2018-2019 support services appropriation. And we'll be provided in forthcoming budgets as the city council may approve. That is the extent of the Consent Agenda Items. With Mr. Focassi asking to pull Item G out, ask for recommendations for all the other...
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through H, with the exception of G.
Support. Move by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through H, with the exception of item number, item letter G. All in support?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President?
Mr. Focassi. I mean, Mr. Frazier, I'm sorry.
I move...
Sitting too close.
Yeah. I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item G, and at the request of Mr. Focassi, a roll call vote.
Support. Is it moved by Mr. Frazier and supported by Mr. Cruz that we consider Item G as a roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
No, not all. She's gotta call our names.
Cruz?
Yes.
Focassi?
No.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Mandalbom?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Agenda Item G is approved.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Focassi.
The reason I voted no on this item is that I would like to see a total city marketing plan, and Smart Zone can be a part of it. But with the competition that we're now seeing, and the attacks, and I guess what the other companies are doing, and going into other cities, I would like to be competitive with those cities. And I think a good, strong marketing plan would address it. And I don't think we really have a plan that is strong enough to keep our community, our people, as well as our corporations here in the city.
Well, thank you, Mr. Focassi, for your comments to explain your action. We will now move into Communications. The first person to recognize is Ms. Gerald.
Residents, you have heard me say that a community is only as strong as its public safety. I applaud this council for turning the City of Southfield pink during Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I applaud you now for turning it purple for the dementia-related diseases. But how about if we turn the building blue and support our dispatch workers? You've heard me say also that whenever you hear a siren, someone in public safety is risking their lives for you, someone you love, or one of your neighbors. But it's the 911 dispatch workers that answer those emergency calls. It is the 911 dispatch workers that collect very valuable information that is sometimes the difference between life and death. It is our 911 dispatch workers that pass on that information to public safety for the right siren to turn on. Our dispatch workers know when to send police and when to send fire, or both. Now, recently, the state of Michigan passed what they call Public Act 51, which increases the 911 search charge to six cents per call. Or they increases the calls by six cents. So, six cents times the amount of calls that our dispatchers receive and service, which there is a difference, I think could generate a lot of money. The City of Southfield did a mandatory ordinance, thanks to the mayor, to Fred Zorn and Dan Brightwell for putting it on the agenda, that when a developer comes in, that they have to do a mandatory art donation of a half of 1% up to a certain amount of the development, and then 1% if it's over a certain amount. Now, you're trying to figure out during the budget, how can you generate money for our dispatchers? Why don't you do that? Why don't you start a mandatory ordinance that for art and 911, any developer? Why don't we go back and get some of that money from Lear and Denzo that have ridden on the gravy train for the last 20 years, getting a tax abatement? I just want you guys to know that we are not in support of this. We want you to choose our dispatch workers over art, over Northland, over restoring art. And if the mayor was able to raise over 600... art, and if the mayor was able to raise over $605,000 to pay the city back for the boy and the bear statue, I bet you if you sold that statue, that's just about what you need for our dispatch workers. Go and get some of the money from these people that have issues before the city and get it from them like he was able to go to those people and get donations.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mr. Mullen.
Bonne Sera. My name is Gerard Mullen, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. On February 23, 2015, in these very chambers, Dan Brightwell was appointed to the Board of Review, while concurrently, Dan was being reappointed to the Veterans Commission illegally. Why illegally? Because the charter says so, and I quote from Section 9.10 entitled Board of Review. Quote, "No member of the Board of Review during his term of office shall be an appointive officer," unquote. The wording is awkward and the grammar is poor. In other words, a member of the Board of Review cannot serve on any other board or commission concurrently. Sad to say, Dan was in violation of the city charter by being reappointed to the Veterans Commission while being on the Board of Review. To top it off, Dan illegally ran for council in 2015, according to Section 9.10 of the Charter, and I quote, "No member of the Board of Review shall be a nominee or a candidate for elective city office," unquote. In fact, you can't be a member of a political party if you are on the Civil Service Commission, and I quote from Section 6.5. "No member of the Commission shall be a member of any local, state, or national committee of a political party, nor be an officer or a member of a committee of any partisan political club or organization, nor be a candidate for any elective office," unquote. Do you folks here on this council see to it that these prohibitions are enforced, or do you look the other way? And/or do you folks selectively enforce these prohibitions like you did back in 2017 with Coretta Hoag, which I talked about last March 26? Gracias.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Ms. Haynes.
Good evening, Yolanda Haynes, 24501, Kinsel. When I was here last time to speak about the dispatch situation, I was a little upset, very upset, because some of the information that we were given, and as I got in the room and started talking to a couple of the officers, I became even more upset. To find out that the city spent $90,000, that's a lot of money, for a report that I felt was incomplete, I would almost say unnecessary. I kind of feel like me and my son could have done it for half that price or even less, you know? To say that the information that was given, I heard more of the real information from the audience. So I don't think that was a good use of the city's money, in my personal opinion. Something like that could have even been done as a senior project for maybe a university student or something, especially when dire straits are money. I just don't understand, if the city doesn't have any money, why they would spend it for something like that? We turned in some information about Auburn Hills, and we got that, you know, free. So, I mean, you said you got to investigate and ask other people. I think that should have been done first. And also, I just don't understand how you can do a survey without asking the most important people that the survey is about. I mean, the police and the fire, and then we got people that don't know about it, that kind of makes us look really bad that we just didn't do homework in that area. We have a standard here in Southfield, and I think that the standard needs to extend to our police and fire in terms of being transparent and respect for our officers. I kind of felt like when I was here that it was a lot of tension in the room, like there's some tension between the city and the fire and the police, and that needs to be fixed. That really needs to be fixed. That does not look good for our city at all, and that does not look good for our standard. And I'd also say because of that, if you have a relationship with someone, let's say a friend, you know when their birthday is or something like that, so you know when they have an important event, maybe if you just have one of the officers that you talk to and say, hey, call me sometime and let me know when you're having a memorial so we won't forget, or we won't collide on these dates, or how we can help each other. We work together, we should be working together for the good of all in this city, for the good of all, especially those that protect us, and that is of most importance. And I think that you all should make this a priority. Instead of talking about where you can't get the money from, find a place, find somewhere to get the money from. Do not cut any of our people from their jobs because they are the first people that respond to what we need. And if you're talking about something you just said in there, if you eliminate them, we're going to be in a lot of trouble here. You know, so this is something that we really need to look at, consider, and not just brush off and say, oh, we were just in a frenzy. I believe if we weren't here that day to make a big stink about it, you may have voted like, okay, we're just going to pay.
That's what I felt like. So there needs to be a check.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Ms. Rose.
Good evening, Mr. Frazier. I'm at the lectern.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not the podium.
Not the podium, good. We are a city that cares for each other. Our loyal citizens have been proud of the services we have, and we're glad to jump in and help when it's needed. Our corporate community, as somebody else mentioned, needs to step up and help us now. We should not be in this alone. Some 10 years ago, we had a millage that came to a 50-cent-per-day home, for the homeowners, to save our emergency services, our roads, our library, and Parks and Rec. Instead of throwing us into a pool of dozens of communities, our administration should let us save our own system. I'm fighting this change because of the 10-year service given to me when I was caring for my husband at home. I called our EMS so often, the dispatcher said, "How can we help you, Mrs. Rose?" I was told by one of our officials that my phone number happened to appear on the site, so it wasn't personal. I don't even care. All I know is I never waited more than two minutes when Norm was so sick. I can't be certain of that same service regarding the Oakland County dispatchers. A friend of mine who's a guard at Great Lakes Crossing is not a fan of the Oakland County system. He told me that in an emergency, they call directly to EMS because the Oakland County dispatchers just are not exactly responsive. That is not pleasant. Back to my husband. The final time I needed our dispatchers, Norm was out of control. Three officers and firefighters could not control him. One of them sat down at our piano and played a few soothing notes, magic. Norm calmed down. You see, they knew this man. They knew him. They knew he was a canter, so they knew what to do, use some music for that poor man. Would Oakland be able to work so, I don't think so, so accurately? I really don't think so. As a result of that incident, I vowed to be there if our department needed help. Thus, the 50-cent-per-day millage saved them, the library, road, and Parks and Rec 10 years ago. Now, I was told by one of our officials, whom I respect, I truly do, that our.
Is what? I didn't know. I heard three minutes up, the mic, the almaca turned the mic off. And so, one of the three minutes, you all in Mac? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Okay. The next person to be recognized, Mr. Toby Rose.
Toby Rhodes, 17001, New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, 2485697189. First, I wanted to say that I hate being here, hate dealing with the city of Southfield, hate dealing with the Police Department, hate dealing with 46th District Court. So really, what I'm saying is not for anybody in the city of Southfield, this is for five years down the line. Like I said back in 2012, I said that something disastrous is going to happen in Southfield because I could see the incompetence in the city of Southfield, the Police Department, 46th District Court back then, and of course, a lot of disastrous things happen, like Northland turned from a viable regional mall into a dirt pile. The only way I could see someone doing something like that is they're intentionally trying to sabotage Southfield for the people who live here. You have SNRI stealing homes from people. Their claim is that, oh, we're doing it to stabilize the community, but then you look at the prices that the houses are being selling at, and just in two, three more years, they're going to be right back at square one with the houses being abandoned and no property taxes being collected, and then they're going to come up with some other excuse. City South was always trying to run some scam to rob people in Southfield. You got the septic tank scam. You got them constantly accusing black men of being criminals, like they've done that to me. I go to vote, and I get attacked by homosexual supporters at the polls when I'm going to vote, and I'm the one get put on trial. And then when I make a complaint against them, oh, the city attorney says, oh, well, you know, that's not really a crime. When a black man accuses someone who ain't black, that's not really a crime, but when someone who ain't black accuses a black man, oh, that's the greatest injustice in mankind. So now I got to go up, have my mother get $1,000 to go bail me out, and now I got 46th District Court playing games with the mail, keep telling me the check is in the mail. And it's funny how, when I go up there to file, I had to go get a durable power of attorney from my mother to go take, get her property back from the city, from the 46th District Court, because they keep playing games saying the check is in the mail. And I got a letter from them, from the court administrator right here, claiming that, oh, well, we put the check in the mail. I said, did you give it to the United States Postal Service? And they said, well, we did our procedure. I said, but did you give it to the Postal Service? Well, why didn't you do this? I said, no, no. I mean, it's like talking to a woman who's mad at you. I mean, there's no professionalism in the city of Southfield, or in 46th District Court, or in the Police Department. I mean, they act like raging lunatics. I mean, they act like they're dealing in a public setting, and you would think there would be a certain level of code of conduct, a certain level of professionalism. I mean, because I do business in Southfield all over the place, and it is, I can count on one hand the number of times I've had to deal with that level of disrespect, and I was at a CVS, and they quickly corrected it. But you see that routinely in the city of Southfield, routinely with the Police Department, routinely with 46th District Court. They lie, they threaten you, they commit acts of violence, and no one's ever fired. So this is not for right now, this is for the future. Now, they said that they're going to send her $1,000, but of course, they're telling me that I got to jump through another hoop, and this is the kind of level of professional, the service quality that you get in the city of Southfield. Totally corrupt, totally incompetent, and totally unproductive.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mr. Bunker.
Clock is ticking. I got 99 minutes? Oh, okay. I got a letter from Mr. Charette that claims the state approved construction of a charter school across the street from me without the city having the opportunity to review the site plan. That was in '08. Eight years later, I got a letter saying, "Public charter school site plans are exempt from review by the city of Southfield." So how can we review the site plans for charter schools in Southfield? Why did a charter school get built, Kenson Seiver, by a public school administrator that you were working as at the same time you voted to install Phase 1 on the blueprint for the school describing storm sewers? See, Mayor, Councilman Frazier at the time, went on to install sewers at Northland that aren't included in the cost so far spent. $30 million was spent on sewers. Mr. Cruz approved them. Mr. Frazier, who can't stay awake, we're stalking to you. We pay your salary, Mr. Frazier. Can you stay awake?
Mr. Bunker.
Mr. Frazier voted to dead-end the street I live on. Rather than recuse himself, he used the street I live on to get to his house for a two-way street after he turned it into a dead end, like all his neighbors. Stay awake, Frazier! You're an elected official. Stay conscious while I'm talking to you. Why are dumpsters being emptied on residential property on Garner Street? Sleepy, useless human being, Frazier. Why are dumpsters installed on R1 zoning property for the permanent record through the chair? Mr. Seiver, would you like to comment? It was you who said dumpsters won't be emptied at 3:00 in the morning. Why are dumpsters being emptied on Garner at 3:00 in the morning?
Mr. President, I want a point of order. The speakers are supposed to.
Stop the clock while he's speaking!
Not directly to.
These are my minutes. Let him speak when I'm done.
Mr. President, I'm suggesting that we take a two-minute break, please, a two-minute break, to have this gentleman escorted out.
Okay.
Escorted out for speaking publicly during communications. This is democracy under the mayor, Seiver. I can't talk about issues regarding a public school Mr. Frazier voted to build. Now he's leaving the room rather than answer honest questions. What kind of city is this? Can I get an honest question answered? Did you vote to install sewers on Northland Drive, Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Bunker, you're making personal attacks, so we ask for your.
I'm asking through the chair if sewers were installed on Garner for $30 million.
Those are personal attacks, and they're out of line.
It's a public question about development and millions.
Cut the, cut the mic off.
$1 million spent to build sewers around Northland.
Just take him.
The record show the city of Southfield will not take responsibility for destroying my residential neighborhood. I have no residential peace and quiet, confusion, it sounds like all Seivers, the master plan to the city.
All right, the meeting is recessed.
Goodbye, my time has yet to expire. Please recognize this city will not allow you to speak publicly. This is the way they treat residents after they build charter schools in my front yard. SFLE, shitball for lease and development. Mr. Crowe's idea, where is he tonight? I left my backpack here. Excuse me. Public hearing, communications, where nobody speaks, nobody answers a question. The city is irresponsible. They build schools and install dumpsters on R1 zoning property and leave residents to go insane. This is an example of somebody affected personally by the way the city is running.
Personal attacks are not allowed. You can obviously, as public officials, you have a certain right, but personal attacks are not allowed, and that's why we pretty much had him escorted out of here. And that's on a going-forward basis, that will be, that's the rule. And just so happened, Mr. Bunker has a history of certain activity, and so it popped up at this particular time. Now, I'm going to get into, we.
Mr. Chairperson.
Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, I'd like to, because I was attacked personally.
Right.
I'd like to respond. I got up and walked out of the room because there was not a shred. I got up and walked out of the room because there was not a shred of, of evidence on his part that was factual. He's been told time and time again that we do not have jurisdiction over schools or charter schools. And he accused me of voting for dead-ending his street. It was at the behest of the people in the neighborhood that wanted that street dead-ended, and I cannot get to my house by going down his street because it's dead-ended, and I would be violating the law. So, all of his challenges and charges against me were, were not legitimate. And our city administrator, because we have talked about when a councilperson, and it's not just me, but when a councilperson is attacked directly, that we're to take a short break to calm the, calm the whole situation down, and that's why I walked out of the room. I'm not, I wasn't angry, but it's what we agreed to do. So, I did follow our rules to give the air time to clear, and I came back in. So, I just want you to know that the accusations that were made, actually for the whole council about the, the sewers and the, and the whole thing are just off-base. So, with that, thank you.
You're welcome. As I previously stated, you know, personal attacks will not be allowed, and we will, I will, before each session on, for the next few meetings, I have a statement that I read. Maybe I need to reinforce that with, with all the audiences on a going-forward basis. Now, I'm going to, this will be a one-time-only event in, in communications. I have a couple of names, several names of individuals who want to be recognized and have a note from a councilperson that want these individuals recognized. But on a going-forward basis, we will not deviate from the, the names that are on the list to be recognized. We have a procedure in place. You would have to register with the clerk at a designated time to be on that, on the next city council meeting. Tonight, somebody, I was approached by a councilperson, and also I was approached early on about this. So I'm going to allow these, we have five additional people to be recognized. This is the only time for the remainder of this year that, that this will happen. So, I will recognize Ms. Barbara Flayer, F-L-A-Y-E-R.
Thank you. I appreciate you recognizing me.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I live on Webster. I've lived there for over thirty-two years. My mother was one of the original people who built the house in Beacon Square, and she lived there for over fifty. I have a real issue with the people who are hired to do garbage. Last week, my recycle bin was not picked up. I called Public Works every single day for four days, and finally, on Thursday, and our garbage gets picked up on Monday, my husband took it in not removed, so. Other people in our neighborhood seem to do that sometimes. The garbage, and, and especially the recycle, they, sometimes they don't come till eight o'clock. Sometimes I see them putting recycled stuff in with garbage. When I spoke to someone at Public Works, she said she would call every day, and obviously that didn't get done. But what she did tell me is that the guy's young, he doesn't have any experience, and he doesn't have any money to work with. And I guess my question is, since they're the one who met this bid, why not? And what she said is that the owner is not giving him any money, and that if I wanted to do anything about anything, come to the city council meeting, that was her recommendation. And I don't really know, you know, their attitude seems to be, we don't care. And we're paying our taxes, and I'm wondering why not? So, I guess that's my question to you, in, in terms of, is mediocre good enough for the residents of Southfield? I don't think so. That's really all I have to say, very kindly and nicely, and with no yelling.
Okay.
I was a teacher for thirty-seven years, so I'm very good at
Thank you. We, we respect your professionalism and decorum that you presented here tonight.
Best way to get the autograph.
Yes, ma'am. With respect to GFL, we have, if you have complaints, please call into DPW, and, and we are looking at, accumulating complaints, we're tracking complaints, starting at a certain date and going forward. So, if you, if you do have complaints, do, do call the Department of Public Works, and we will be following up on complaints after a certain, well, the quantity of complaints. Next person to be recognized is Ms. Sarah Habbo.
Sarah Habbo, two nine two four five, Marshall Street, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh seven six, and thank you, council, for recognizing me today. Councilmember Madenbaum said something earlier today, and he said that we pay high taxes in Southfield because we get high-quality services, and recently, our trash and recycling services have been less than high-quality, as one of the residents just brought up moments ago. And one of my concerns is that if we outsource our nine-one-one dispatchers, that we're going to have poor quality with our emergency services. And what will happen with the two-year contract that Lethar Village has with the dispatchers as well? Part of the reason that in Southfield we have such good emergency services and they're so quick in to respond is because our nine-one-one dispatchers are of the utmost quality. I believe it was Councilman Frazier who said that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And so, our nine-one-one dispatchers are high-quality, and that's what we expect in Southfield. I might help, I help take care of my dad, who is bedridden and also does suffer from dementia, and when we've needed to contact nine-one-one services, the dispatchers have been amazing. At one point, they were part of the reason why my, my father didn't have any of the side effects from his first stroke. And so, having people like that serving our community is something that is of a high value, and I don't think it's something that we can afford to lose, even if it ends up costing us money to pay those people to provide that service. It's something that we expect in Southfield, is high-quality services, and we should respect those people providing those high-quality services by paying them fair wages and making sure that their contracts are honored. So I'm strongly against outsourcing the nine-one-one dispatchers. Thank you.
The next person to be held, be recognized is Mr. Hill.
Hello, my name is Harold Hill, Southfield resident for over twenty-eight years, and I just wanted to echo the sentiments of a lot of the people here about outsourcing the nine-one-one services. I moved here twenty-eight years ago because, first of all, Southfield's safe, inviting, and beautiful. An optimal word is safe. I've been places where it wasn't as safe, and when you call nine-one-one, you may get a response or you may not. I can tell you about a specific incident where I was with a judge two blocks away from a police station, and it took over an hour and a half for the police to get there. I did not feel safe in that environment, and I know they didn't either, and they didn't come until they found out that that person was a judge. So when you have quality services, like you said, if it's not broke, don't fix it, but sometimes it's not what you pay for, it's, you want to sit back and pay for what you get. And so, with that being said, I just wanted to echo those sentiments, leave the nine-one-one services, we can get the money from somewhere else, but quality services are very important.
The next person to be recognized is, I'm assuming,
Hello. First, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak, and so before I give my comments, it might be a good idea if we can have the registration to speak done by email or some form of technology, because I felt the urgency to come today, especially after getting the sun report about dispatch. So, that's something you might want to take into consideration.
Mr. Priest, give your address.
Thank you. My name is Nanette DePriest, one nine seven eight five West Twelve Mile, three six six, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero seven six. So I wanted to make sure that I took a moment to support everyone who is taking the position for not outsourcing dispatch. The relationship between dispatch and all of those who provide us with safety and security is critical. That relationship gives us the service, the high-quality service, which was one of the things, and this is echoing the gentleman that just spoke. When I moved to Southfield a little over twenty-five, twenty-six years ago, that was one of the priorities, and that was my safety and my security, not just when I go to sleep at night, but when I go out and go walking in the neighborhood. So I think that's a critical point. So I want to acknowledge the quality service that we get from those professionals, not just dispatch, but for all the professionals that come and provide us with safety and security, for being a resident, for those that have a business. The other thing that I would ask that the council take into consideration is to have a transparent, balanced business plan where city planning is collaborating with police and fire and emergency, because as the city continues to evolve, and we're bringing businesses in that are attracting all kinds of audiences of people in the neighborhood, it might be nice to have an equal balance of all of the resources that we need, all of the technol- technology that's possible for us to be safe. The city is continuing to evolve, which is a great thing, but it would be wonderful to still have that same sense of security by having dispatch and all the professionals needed for the investment of our taxes and our purchases in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, is it M.I.A.H., the last name?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you very much for hearing me out. My name is Jaketa Mia, two four two three zero, Willand Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three four, two four eight three five seven six four six three. I'm here as a resident of the city of Southfield, the city of it all. I moved my family here over twenty-five years ago. I had issues where I current, where I had previously resided, and I couldn't get any response. I moved my family here, I could have lost both, both of my sons. I moved my family here, good response, good people. I've even, I've even sat in there and watched them work, the nine-one-one operators. They do one heck of a job. I don't know how they do it, they do an awesome job. I'm here as a citizen to ask you to please listen to us. We would like to keep our nine-one-one operators here, please support our operators. This is a beautiful city, we'd like to keep it that way. The response time is awesome, we would like to keep them here, please do not take them away. You will have people leaving the city of Southfield in droves. We came here because of the city services. The city services are excellent here, so please, don't take them away from us. Thank you.
That concludes the communication portion of this meeting. We will now open it up to council, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. Through the chair, first of all, thank you for recognizing the people that I, the names on the list that I gave you, and thank you again for coming out and speaking what's on your mind. We do listen to everything that you have to say. Secondly, I just wanted to concur with Councilman Frazier when I voted no on the Moncor website thing. It was because of the marketing as well, but I also feel like it's my job as chair of the finance committee to also have the city work together. We do have a web developer on staff, and I think that, and what we're going to try to do, and I know that the city administration, as well as our developer, has stated that we will be doing this going forward, is having better communication and working interdepartmentally to see if things that we are currently outsourcing, we may be able to do inside, in-house. So, that's something we will look closer at, and we will be talking to one another a little bit better, and where we can bring monies in-house or spend money using our current employees, that's what we're going to do. Southfield has some of the best employees anywhere, and that's evident by the services that we have. No matter what, whether there's a contract or not, whether there's a dispute or not, whether they feel they have low morale, whatever it is, it's never shown to us, the residents, the work has always been above par, it's been A-one. So I just want to say thank you to all of the employees as well. And Thank you. And I also wanted to let you know that when you call me, I am listening, and I'm working on a lot of the questions and issues that come up. I've had several meetings with our city administrator, and we will be having regular meetings going forward. We will be working on more and precise communications. There's a lot of things going on in the city of Southfield. Our city engineer was speaking tonight, they give us a lot of information, we will, you'll see more of that, where there's road constructions and how you will be impacted by those. The information is, will become more and more available, not only with the roads, but also with the beachwoods and parks and wrecks, whatever else is going on in the city, we will be working towards communicating information to you in multiple ways, so that you'll be aware of what's going on. So I just wanted to say thank you. Yes, keep the calls coming. We are working together as a council, we're working better on getting our communications out and being transparent with what we're doing here in the city. So thank you.
Mr. Fokasi?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. You know, sitting here and listening to, to those individuals who got up to spoke, I, I just sat here and wondered, you know, where are they getting their information that my colleagues and mayor administration staff are going to make a decision that would hurt this community? I, I go back sometime to the city of Southfield, matter of fact, as one of the founders of a life support, and also Mobell gave us nine-one-one back in the seventies to use so that we can get to the homes and businesses of this city as fast as we could. And I was listening the other night about how this group came forward, and I don't know what they heard, what they did, who said it, you know, what, who you're following in taking, fighting whatever they're doing to ruin the city and, and the life support unit that we have. Our police and fire are respected. Those individuals who are handling our emergency calls are respected, and we have never done anything in this city, mayor, my colleagues, have done anything to hurt this community. And I don't see why, when we get a report, the last minute, why everybody heard somebody else set the fire, so to speak, that we were going to do something that was going to be advantageous to this, to you, not advantageous to you, but to hurt you in any way. You know, I, I don't think that, that there's one person, as I stated, in this city would like to stop communication. We all have families here, we all live here, a lot of us were all raised here. Some of you people have been here for years, and I, I don't think that you really want to see the kind of emergency we had prior to life support, when you got an ambulance and an oxygen tank, and that was the best that you got. Southfield was the one that created the life support and the nine-one-one with Mobell. And we've really been proud of the many runs that they make and the lives that we saved. And so, when sitting here, I just want you to know that, that you have to have respect for the people who work daily, the staff people, administration, mayor, council, all of us, that, you know, we understand that, that what is before us. We understand this report, but I don't think anybody has made a decision, and I don't know who is spelling, smending the word around, that we've made a decision and, and this is what you're going to get. And you know, you get a couple of people, you know, you say wolf, wolf, and everybody jumps. Well, I wish it was people who spread this rumor and wolf, and everybody jumps. Well, I wish those people who spread this rumor and, and are negative to the city stay out of here, because it really doesn't help the community. It doesn't help the neighbors that come here and listen to us for the first time. We're on TV. But we respect the work that you ladies do, and I don't think anybody wants to hurt anyone here. And you know, the other night, when I seen all these officers here and firemen here, you know, I had to say to myself, you know, you're talking about, you know, their children, and I bet you if I had them all stand, those who live in Southfield, I'd probably get two or three. But we understand that too. We understand that too. But we have a lot of people who don't live here in the business community, and we treat them the same way as we do the people who live here 24/7. So I just want you to know that there has been no decision made. We get many reports day in, day out, but we review them, and we try to make the most honest decision we can. And that'll happen like this report as well. And you know, whether it goes one way or the other, that still is up in the air. But I'm sure that it'll be really digested thoroughly before this council makes a decision.
That's it. Okay. Um, Mr. Manobom.
Um, through the chair to the seat administrator. Uh, last week, HHS said that they were giving out some grants, a billion dollars' worth of grants for the, oh, to fight the opioid academic epidemic. That's a mouthful. But, um, I was wondering if we need to talk with our lobbyists or our state rep to make sure that, besides for states qualifying, cities can qualify as well. So I think that that's an opportunity that we can try to look at, look, uh, go after some money and help those that have, um, that suffer with, um, this addiction. That being said, I want to, um, ta, uh, Councilwoman, um, Taylor mentioned that, you know, we try to get communication out about different events going on. So being that we're here, um, there's several Parks and Rec events that are happening with the beginning of summer. The first one is actually this Wednesday on the front lawn. It's called Come Out and Play, from 3:00 to 7:00 on the front lawn. They'll have a lot of different activities, inflatables, a zip line, um, so free event for the whole family. Um, next week, Wednesday, on the 27th, from 5:00 to 9:00 on the front lawn, they're having Family Fun and Safety Night. So another opportunity to come out. Uh, there'll be a movie showing once at, uh, beginning at 7:30, um, as it starts to get a little, a little dark, but there will be, um, different activities for, for everyone of all, for everyone of all ages. The city is trying to come out to the different communities. Parks and Rec started this last year, but they have recreation on the move. Um, they will go Tuesday mornings and Tuesday evenings, um, on different dates to different parks throughout the neighborhoods that are maybe underutilized or that are not necessarily your Southfield front lawn, but they'll go to different parks. There's flyers on the website. You can look at their Facebook. They post when they're going to be at the different parks. Um, and they bring the games to you. It is geared for kids aged 5 to 13, but follow the city for that information. Something new that we're starting for residents is Summer in the City on, uh, Thursday of this week, um, from 7:00 to 9:00, um, again on the front lawn. We're going to get a lot of use out of our front lawn this summer.[842.61][842.61][laughter] But we're going to have, um, a performance from New World Soul. Um, there'll be food trucks, games, and there'll be a whole, uh, it's a new program that we're trying to, uh, to get more people out. Um, it was also mentioned, uh, by some speakers as well, some council members about our 911 dispatch. And I'd just like to point out that we do have, um, job openings on the city's website, including a 911 emergency communications cadet. Um, so for those who maybe have just graduated high school, if you know someone looking for a job, that may not be an advanced 911 dispatcher, we do have a cadet program that you can apply for. Uh, tell your friends and neighbors and anyone you know that may be looking for a job. While you're searching for jobs, we have a number of other postings on the city's website and, um, even some seasonal jobs if you're just home for the summer, uh, and you have a college-age student or so that, uh, you want them to be put to work. So that being said, please enjoy the, the summer with all the activities we have. Keep following the city's Facebook page, our website. Come to our Parks and Recs department and pick up a flyer with all the information, and remember to stay hydrated. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes, uh, uh, one of the items that, uh, Mr. Manobom talked about is the opioid epidemic. And as the chairperson of the Legislative Committee, if you choose to, uh, refer that to the Legislative Committee, we can follow through on that, find out is there something that we as a council can do or a city can do to get some funds to, uh, help offset the costs that our fire department has incurred with, uh, with this problem.
Absolutely. I'll send you whatever information I have.
Okay. But boss has got to tell me I got to do it.[966.06][966.06][laughter]
All right. Um, tonight, tonight has been a very, uh, impact, impactful night from a standpoint of information presented. And I just want to remind the, um, listeners and the individuals in the audience that we are tracking complaints that deal with GFL. So if you have a complaint, call in, uh, DPW. But I know a couple other entities are taking complaints, but, um, DPW should be your, your focal point. Um, and we, at a point in time, we will accumulate those complaints. And we did meet with, um, a GFL on May 29th. Uh, we had a very extensive discussion with them. Uh, and at DPW, the mayor was there, I was there, and, um, uh, it was a, a sit-down, very serious meeting. And I think they got the word that we were, um, not pleased, our citizens are not pleased. And we highlighted some, um, discrepancies. And the bottom line was they, they were going to institute some retraining of their people and, uh, but we will look at the results to see where that comes from. Uh, with, with respect to dispatch, that was purely a preliminary, um, look, and, uh, and the results indicated that it was preliminary, a preliminary, a preliminary look at, at, um, that operation. The, the process of, of any good management, uh, you look at options, you always look at options. I, and I, uh, the administration, um, is being proactive when they, they take a look at option. We had a, um, and so, nothing is going to happen on this on a, on a, on a current basis. And that, and if, if anything ever happened, we would take a, take a serious look at the human capital that's involved with that, and we don't, we're not taking that lightly. Uh, the, uh, the efficiency of it, the results, if we, if we take action, what is the results of this? And my background is pretty much financial analysis, and I always had to look at, make presentations before individuals that make decisions. And we had to be able to answer every potential question. So that report was not, didn't even answer, uh, uh, the most basic questions that were there. So, but rest assured, um, there's nothing immediate going to happen with the dispatch. And if, and if anything start that way, you will get a full-blown, uh, discussion of it, and, uh, we will obviously open it up to, to any type of public forum that needs to be opened up, uh, if we want to make some action on that. So nothing will be, um, slipped under the rug or anything of that nature. It's my understanding, the only reason it came up then, because it was, individuals heard there was someone gathering data, and they wanted to foreword that data. So if the decision was made to bring this forward now at this particular point, to put it on the table and just indicate that this is where we are. This is just a, a what-if type of process. Uh, and it could be, this, like with your own family budget, what if I go to Target as opposed to Kroger, those kind of things. So, but this is, this is, um, purely a case of, um, being proactive and looking at, uh, various items. And with respect to all the activities that's happening this year in Southfield, I look upon that as being a part of our 60th anniversary. And so I do want individuals to pre-spread the word that Southfield, we will have activities this year. And every time I hear something, we're going to have something on the lawn here, we'll be doing this, this month, that month. I look at it as being, uh, celebrating those 60 good years that we've had here in Southfield, and a telegraphing this, the 160th, uh, future years that will be good here in Southfield. So with no other council comments, I will move on to the mayor.
Okay. Um, thank you. We are, um, calls that come into my office are, continue to be monitored, uh, regarding, um, brush pickup or, um,
My mic is not on.
My mic is on. Um, we are continuing to monitor, uh, the situation, we're logging the calls. Um, uh, we continue to get calls about the lack of, uh, brush pickup. Things have been out for a number of weeks. Uh, those are all turned over to, uh, the Public Works Department. Um, and I know that some of the situations that have been reported to me have been remediated. Um, I, uh, would be happy to talk to you after the meeting. I really did not understand your comments about someone saying they aren't being paid enough or don't have enough money. I'm, uh,
The input that I got from Public Works.
I'll talk to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to hear, uh, because that doesn't compute, um, with me. Um, at any rate, um, uh, and I would just, um, uh, echo something that, um, Mr. Frazier said. Um, I have met repeatedly, um, with Mr. Bunker, and I find it's impossible, uh, to, uh, clarify anything with him. First of all, he never lets you answer. Uh, and secondly, um, uh, the, uh, we have, these things have been explained year after year after year to him. Uh, and, um, I don't, I don't know where he gets some of his information, but there's certainly no $30 million expended on sewers at Northland. Um, Mr. Cruz didn't vote on that because there was no vote on it. Uh, and I had nothing to do with the charter school, um, when I worked for Southfield Public Schools. Southfield Public Schools does not charter schools. Um, and everything else that, uh, he's obsessed about, uh, you know, we've really tried to work with him, and it's, uh, and I can't repeat enough that in the, um, uh, local newspaper, uh, it would appear, if you didn't read the article closely enough, that, uh, all of the dirt that is stockpiled at Northland was going to be turned into cement. There is just a small batch plant, it can't take more than a quarter of an acre, and it is for current construction projects. The dirt at Northland is being stockpiled, uh, because, uh, if you need dirt to fill in, uh, a, a foundation or a basement, uh, you have to buy it. Um, and if you have dirt to, that you need to get rid of, um, you have to pay someone to take it away. So proactively, the city has been taking, uh, earth, uh, clean fill, um, uh, off of people's hands so that they don't have to buy it, uh, later. But moving on to a couple of other events, and I thank Mr. Manobom as always for, um, mentioning, uh, things that are going on in, uh, Parks and Rec. But I would like to mention that this Sunday, uh, June 24th, is the 12th Annual, uh, Southfield Parks and Garden Club Garden Walk. It will take place from 2:00 to 5:00 PM in the Ravines neighborhood. If you're not familiar with the Ravines neighborhood, it's, uh, off 9 Mile between Beach and Inkster Road. And check-in will be at 22500 Lake Ravines Drive. Uh, this is an annual event to showcase, uh, some of, uh, Southfield's great neighborhoods, as well as, um, unique and beautiful home gardens. Um, there are 10 yards that will be on display, uh, this Sunday. Tickets are $10. They can be purchased from any, uh, Parks and Garden Club member or through my office, uh, at City Hall. Uh, also, uh, speaking of beautification, uh, I would like to mention that the deadline is approaching for the, uh, Southfield Community Pride Awards. Uh, the deadline is Friday, June 29th. Uh, the nominations are accepted up until 5:00 PM, and those are turned into the, uh, Community Relations Office. Uh, and again, the categories are neighborhood entranceways, um, single-family homes, um, apartments, condominiums, small grounds, condominiums, large grounds, churches, schools, and, um, as well as, uh, business properties, small and, and large. We also have a category for people that, um, don't have the most showy yard, but they, um, are consistently well-maintained and have curb appeal. Uh, applications are available, uh, online or out in the lobby at the, uh, City, um, Hall Reception Desk, uh, and you can find them online, um, under the city's website, uh, Community Relations Department. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Administrator.
Yes, uh, Mr. President. This past, uh, week, the city sold the second series in our 99 million dollar bond, uh, generated a little over around $32 million. Uh, I want to report that, uh, going through our bond rating, we were against, uh, stayed at the same rating, double A, stable. Uh, the recommendations of Standard and Poor's is that we develop a debt service policy, a general fund policy. You heard, uh, earlier that, uh, our general fund's rate around 18%. Uh, the, the target's probably about 20% is what Standard and Poor's would like to see. They also suggested that we develop a five-year forecast. We have been doing a five-year forecast in a very, uh, crude fashion since 2010. We're looking at some software options to further elaborate and make that a little bit more sophisticated. What was of concern to Standard and Poor's, and, uh, it was touched that we did adopt a balanced budget tonight, and council spent a substantial amount of time on Friday, June 8th, to get us there. Of concern was our, our OPEP, our Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is currently hovering around $8 million a year, wage pressures, where we're at with contracts, uh, the fact that our wages really haven't been adjusted since 2008, um, deferred capital. You know, I have took, been saying publicly for the last month, we in essence have a structural deficit of about 12 and a half million dollars. We've got to continue to address that. To the question of our millage rate, in May of 2010, we took the millage to the charter max. Legally, you cannot take your millage anymore unless we amend the charter would be the, the mechanism there. So first, you would have to amend the charter. I'm also going to remind you since, and I've been saying this for the last number of meetings, since 2010, the same time you raised your millage rate, almost four and a half mils from, with that charter max, you've also, your Public Act 345, which covers your police and fire pensions, you went from 1.7 mils to a little over 5 mils, another 3.3. So since May of 2010, you've raised almost 4.8 mils, I, I'm, um, 4.7, 7.8 mils, um, has been the amount levied in increasing taxes. That's a substantial number. The, um, challenge for all of us is in Proposal A. As presented in the budget, there's almost $800 million in taxable value that we can't capture. That would generate over another $20 million and probably even allow us to lower that millage rate. You know, so there's some, some play in that. You know, I, um, we will bring forward a policy on general fund, uh, debt service. We are working on a water rate sewer bond in the rate of, of $54 million to cover projects, and we've committed to the Finance Committee that that would happen in the next month, those policies. The five-year forecast, we're going to review some software and look at that. Um, these wage pressures and discussions with Council President and Finance Chair, um, These wage pressures and discussions with council president and finance chair, there's, we're probably looking at doing some wage surveys, but again, the money has to come from someplace. You're at the maximum you can levy in taxes. The building department is probably your bright spot, but you raised fees almost 30% in the last two years to make that group. That was a group the general fund used to subsidize. You're no longer subsidizing that. And you saw that in the pie charts that you were looking at. You know, so the budget's going to continue to be a, a challenge. Well, I'm often referred to as the emergency financial manager. Nothing's further from the truth. You folks, elected officials, would have no say in that process. If you talk to those communities that have been in it, the first thing they do is they just slash the contracts. And don't kid yourself, this process is very alive, very fair, very transparent. So again, you're at the maximum you can levy. Your revenue sharing is $3 million less than it was in 2001. You've got $800 million that you're not capturing. You've got to recognize that the pie is only so large. You have employees who are going to get raises in the 312 arbitration process. I don't know how it doesn't happen. If the group that's in question, the dispatchers are brought to market rate, you just dug that hole, another $200,000, you know, you just added another $200,000 to their operation. If every employee gets a wage to put them not even near market, they'll be picking up another $10,000 or another $200,000 a year. Again, the pie is finite. There's nothing you folks can do legally. Lansing doesn't really allow you to do a lot of things. My appeal to every bargaining group is we continue to work and we work with Lansing to get that $800 million back. I will share with the chairman of the Legislative Committee, the Citizens Research Council has made a list of things that this state can do to help local governments. Publicly, I have stated that Lansing's public policy is hostile to our existence. They're not doing too much to help us out. But to people in the audience, none of us like change, but you can't, you got to live within the means. Couple other comments. Mr. Bunker, every dialogue I have with him is about the city buying his house for an inflated price. I'm sorry, that's not what we exist for. I have said to him, when you're ready to sell your house, let us know. If we can make something happen or help you find a buyer, we're happy to do. But if every resident came to us when they wanted to sell their house, it's just not, not what we're in business for. The, the school bit is explained, been explained this evening. I want to touch on the Human Services Grant, federal grant to the states. The state's agent is primarily counties. My preliminary review of the grant, it really preferences counties and large urban communities. We have, we have it on our list, but my initial review was most likely going to be money by formula and by counties because the county is the state's agent. The county typically runs health, community and mental, health services, health departments. It's not typically a function in Michigan of municipal government. Again, the, the administration, we will look at as many things as we have to, to stay afloat and the goal is keeping the emergency financial manager out of Southfield and letting democracy, letting people vote to establish, to make those management decisions for us. And we're going to continue a strong growth strategy. That is what Northland is about. All of the work we're doing in the housing arena, I think every one of you know that we have brought comps back probably 30, 40% with some of the things we're doing in every section of the city. So that's what the Smart Zone's about, the DDA, the city center. So, you know, I, I think we continue to stay focused. I want to thank council for adopting a budget. We put a, probably in my nine years here, the most amount of time I've, I've seen go in a budget. Want to recognize Austin Michaels and Karen Ellie for the work they did in this budget process that actually started in December of 17 to get us to tonight. So, thank you very much.
Madam Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Okay. Ms. Clerk?
Yeah. As you guys know, we have an election coming up on August the 7th and we recently sent out the permanent absentee applications for all those that are on the permanent list. In the event that you did not get one and you know that you should, please give our office a call, 248-796-5150, so we can get you one. But we sent out roughly 8,600, so everyone should have received theirs. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Nothing to report. The planner is not here. Assessor, engineer, we have nothing to schedule, no ordinances. This meeting is adjourned.